All right, I'm going to call to order this regular meeting of the Atascadero Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, October 15th, and we are in City Hall. So first, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Anderson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a roll call, please. Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Heath.
Here.
Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Schmidt.
Okay.
Commissioner Chairperson Keen.
Here.
Commissioner Carranza.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Vandennikev.
Here.
All present. Okay, can we get an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Vandennikev.
Yes.
Chairperson Keen.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, so this is the time for public comment. This is the portion of the meeting that is reserved for persons wishing to address the Commission on any matter not on this agenda and over which the Commission has jurisdiction. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record before making your presentation. And go ahead and step up to the podium on to my left. Okay, seeing no one with public comment, I will close that and move on to the consent calendar.
I'll go ahead and motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Carranza.
Definitely.
Vice Chairperson Vandennikev.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Heath. Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Chairperson Keen.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Did you want to say yes, Commissioner Heath?
Yes.
Okay. And we will move on to our public hearings. Dazzle me.
Ex parte.
Oh, gosh, I always forget ex parte. Okay, ex parte. Commissioner Heath, do you have any ex parte on our item for 11:450 Viejo Camino and 11:505 El Camino Real?
No, I do not.
Commissioner Anderson.
No ex parte.
Vice Chairperson Vandennikev.
No ex parte.
Commissioner Carranza.
None.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes, the city manager spoke with me about the project. And then I followed the hearings on the previous project very, very closely when it was about.
Commissioner Hughes.
No ex parte.
No ex parte for me either. So now we can proceed to the presentation. Thank you so much, Chair and members of the Commission. So this item before you is a little bit of a unique item. It's a development agreement between the City of Atascadero and Scott Newton, a property owner. So the location of the properties in question are on Viejo Camino and El Camino Real. It's an approximately four acre site. It's currently zoned public and in the general plan public designation. There were a couple of past applications on the project site for some mini storage development projects. Those projects were eventually denied at the city council level. There was eventually some litigation entered into by the applicant with the city. And part of that litigation was a settlement agreement that promised that the city would process a development agreement to solidify some of the development potential for the site and give some certainty as to density and types of uses. Couple of things about the development agreement and is a binding agreement between the city and the current or any future property owner. It's valid for 10 years from the date of approval at city council. And again, it outlines use and development standards for the property. So within the development agreement in terms of use, the development agreement would allow development of the property with up to 42 residential units. Again, there's no development plan submitted at this time. This is just sort of a concept use that would be allowed if the city processes such an application in the future. This project would require a general plan amendment at some point in time in the future in order to be consistent with the general plan for residential use. The city is currently processing our citywide general plan update, and we do anticipate residential being and allowed use on this site. If that were not to happen for some reason, any, the property owner currently or any future developer would come back and process that general plan amendment in accordance with the development agreement before any construction on the site would occur. Part of this development agreement also includes some language about the potential for creek realignment as part of the project. There's currently an ephemeral drainage that runs through the project site that was a part of the previous applications. The current owner is hoping to realign that creek to just make a more developable area out of the project site. It's currently very shallow. There was a lot of grazing on the property. And so they're hoping to realign that creek and redefine it. In doing so, they would still need to meet all local, state, and federal standards for doing so. So that would include some analysis on hydrology and flooding.
Sorry to interrupt. Hang on for just a second. Newton's having a tough time, or his attorney had a tough time getting on to the hearing. So we gotta just.
Okay, we gotta pause for a second and make sure that we have our participants via Zoom. Hold on.
Chairperson Keen. Chairperson Keen. Do you want to just notify that we're taking a brief recess for technological issues?
We are taking a break because, I'm sorry, why are we taking a break?
A brief recess to address technical issues.
We are taking a brief recess to address some technical issues.
Thank you.
Yeah, I should get on to it.
Kate, I'm just doing a sound check. Can you hear me? Just text me back and let me know.
This actually. I'm sent out of order. This is very quick.
Chairperson Keen. Tori. We've resolved the issue for now, so if you want to bring us back from recess and we'll maybe just start the presentation over for this item.
Okay, so we are reconvening for our regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting. Thank you. So this item is a development agreement between a property owner and the City of Atascadero. It's a little bit of a unique application that we have not seen before. The properties that it encumbers are properties on Viejo Camino and El Camino Real that are approximately four acres. They are across the street approximately from Paloma Park. They have a general plan designation of public and a zoning district of public currently on the project sites. There were a couple of past applications on this particular project site for mini storage development. Those applications were eventually denied by city council. And the city and the property owner did enter into some litigation over those project denials. Part of the litigation was a settlement agreement which set forth the city's intention to process this development agreement and allow for certain uses and development rights to be spelled out for future development of the property. This would be a binding agreement between the City of Atascadero and the current or any future property owner. It would be valid for 10 years, and it does outline use and development standards for the property. So the development agreement allows for up to 42 residential units to be developed on the site. Again, there's no development plan submitted at this time. This is just a concept and use plan for the site. And any future development would have to come back with fully compliant plans that either comply with city codes or the development agreement if specified in the development agreement. Part of that use, because it's residential and does not comply with our general plan designation at this time, is a general plan amendment. So the city is processing a citywide general plan update. We do anticipate that this project site will be designated for multifamily residential use. And then this use will be consistent with that future general plan designation. If for some reason this site is not designated residential as part of our citywide general plan update, any future developer would need to process a general plan amendment to allow this use to be consistent with our general plan. Part of the development agreement also spells out the ability to realign the existing creek that runs through the property site. The existing drainage is currently an ephemeral drainage, and there's been a lot of grazing on the property. So it's sort of very wide and undefined at times. So this development agreement does lay out standards for creek realignment. Any, any realignment of the creek or touching of that sort of area does include a number of state, federal, and local regulations that still need to be adhered to. They would need to do a hydrology analysis and work through FEMA if they're changing any of the floodway or floodplain mapping. So none of those requirements would be waived or altered as part of the development agreement. But the development agreement allows them to pursue creek realignment if they choose to, to create greater developable area on the property. The development agreement also spells out some standards for site access and traffic. We did do a secret document as part of this project, and so we did need to look at potential traffic impacts and site access. So it does restrict the primary access to Viejo Camino to lie with Bosina Court for safety and proper street striping and access. There would also be curb gutter and sidewalk along the Viejo Camino frontage. They're not taking access off El Camino, so there would be no frontage improvements on that particular side of the street. And that is where the creek comes out through a culvert. And there would be some additional challenges to additional improvements along El Camino Real. Part of the development agreement also requires a pedestrian connection for VMT reduction down to the commercial property that's at the corner of Viejo Camino and El Camino Real. It's likely that the city will actually accomplish this project as part of our CBPG funding. But should we not, then the developer or any future developer would provide an asphalt pedestrian path until that property develops and provides full frontage improvements. So in terms of applicability of city codes and policies, again, this development agreement doesn't necessarily supersede all local codes and policies, but further defines what would be required if the site develops with residential uses. So the project would still need to meet all objective design standards as outlined in our code, would still need to meet all flood control and stormwater regulations, and ensure that there's no downstream, downstream impacts to neighboring properties. They still may need to meet all building and fire codes, and they would still need to annex into our community facilities district prior to permit or map consistent with our fiscal policy. So again, we talked a little bit about general plan consistency before. Development agreement is about the same level of zoning, so it doesn't necessarily need to be consistent with zoning, but it does need to be consistent with the general plan. So because this development agreement lasts for 10 years and the city's in the process of doing our general plan update, we anticipate that this development agreement and future development of the site per the development agreement will be consistent with our general plan. If for some reason not, then the future developer will process all applicable applications to ensure consistency. As I previously mentioned, we did circulate an environmental document that anticipated build out with the 42 residential units, which is their maximum development potential. That was circulated to the public for review, and the city council will be certifying that document and taking action on that at their meeting when they review the development agreement. This part of the development agreement is that this does allow for a streamlined approval process for future development. So the environmental analysis is complete, and a future development that complies with the development agreement and applicable city codes will be able to move forward without an additional SEQA analysis. So just to conclude, the development agreement provides a path forward for future development in the site in a manner that's agreed to by the city and the property owners and accomplishes goals of both of those parties. The agreement provides some certainty as to density and the ability to realign the creek to ensure that certain development rights and expectations are retained into the future. And there are provisions included to ensure that all local, state, and federal regulations are followed and adhered to throughout that process. So the Commission does have a couple of alternatives this evening. You can recommend modifications to the provisions of the draft development agreement. We do have a signed settlement agreement, and so recommendations can't be in conflict with that settlement agreement. So if you have any recommendations, we can talk through that a little bit more. You can determine that more information is needed and send it back to staff and the applicant for review. And we can talk through if you believe that there is missing information in any portion of the project that's before you this evening. You can also recommend that the city council not approve the proposed development agreement, and then we would continue litigation with the property owner. So staff is recommending that the Planning Commission takes action to adopt the draft resolution that's included in your agenda packet and staff reports to recommend that the city council approve the development agreement that's in substantial conformance with the attached draft. There could be some minor changes as we move forward to city council. And that agreement again is between property owner Scott Newton and the City of Atascadero. And that does conclude our presentation. We're available for any questions and discussion. Does anyone have any questions for staff to clarify anything that Kelly just said? Yes, Commissioner Schmidt.
So, did I hear correct that, well, let's start off. So the, the general plan amendment is falling into the update that we're doing for the property.
That is anticipated, correct? The draft land use, a plan that has been blessed by city council does include this as a multifamily project site.
And so in terms of the hearing draft, EIR, then there's going to be some discussion about the property specifically or just generally?
Generally, the EIR is not a project-specific EIR, so it will analyze traffic and growth projections citywide.
The design objectives you had mentioned about future SEQA analysis. And if I heard correctly, if it met the stipulations of the development agreement and the design are objective design standards, then there's potential for not, not, no need for future analysis.
Correct.
The 10-year lifespan. What happens if the project doesn't come to fruition within the 10 years?
The property reverts back to what it is zoned and general plan designation at that time.
Even though it might be changed within the general plan amendment, or would there have to be a subsequent amendment to revert it back to public open space?
No, the city has control through our citywide general plan update on future planning efforts and use throughout the city.
Okay. I mean, that's a lot of work to do within 10 years. Based on what I heard when I was following the the storage facility discussion, what would happen if there would be a group who decides to, as most groups do, challenge the SEQA analysis or the lack thereof and extend that timeline or push the timeline on the development agreement?
I believe the development agreement stipulates that the timeframe would pause if there was any sort of legal challenge, but our city attorney can check in on that.
Yes, just checking that now. I believe there's something to that effect, but I just want to confirm, and then I'll, I'll loop back to you.
So you can proceed with other questions for now. We can proceed with other, any other questions for now while we take a look at that question.
The agreements is saying the potential for up to 42 units of density, but with constraints and stuff, they're going to be, might end up with something obviously less than 42. Has the owner recognized what might occur with the development agreement?
Yes.
And he's agreed to it?
The development agreement is not signed yet. It didn't need, does need to be approved by city council first.
Acknowledged.
Signing, but yes, there has been a collaborative effort.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Do we have, is there an applicant? There is not. This is partially, mostly a city-led process for the agreement with the applicant. So we do not have the applicant here this evening, but there might be some members of the audience wishing to speak. Yes, so I will open public comment, please. Oh, the podium's over here now. Come up to the podium and state your name, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing no public comment, I will close public comment on this item. Do we get clarification on that time? Oh.
It looks like we might have a last minute.
Okay, I will reopen public comment.
Actually.
Actually, just a couple of questions.
Can you state your name for the
Oh, yeah, my name is Clyde Snyder, and I'm resident of Tascadero in the Pluma Creek area. And I witnessed and was part of the battles of the storage units. In any event, it seems this is all developing out of the legal agreement between the city and Pismo Councilman Newton. Number one, I gather this is kind of pro forma, just to get the agreement to city council and have them pass it. Is that a correct understanding?
Please, yeah, you can direct your questions to the commission, and if the commission has
Go ahead and give us all your questions, and then we will answer what we can, and then we'll have staff answer.
So this is obviously, number one, coming out of the settlement, I just need a positive on that. That also that the time for examining this will only come community-wide if there's an application for a project. Okay, and last but not least, will this, will the presentation be posted by the planning, uh, planning department? Is that a bail one line?
I can definitely answer the last one, yes. The presentation is posted on on our agenda on the planning commission website. I don't have that URL off the top of my head.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah. Yes, this development agreement, correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly. This development agreement is just outlining what can possibly happen in the future and is not any kind of plan for what is going to happen. So they still have to go through all the process of doing the development plan when they're actually ready to build something, and then the letters and things that we normally do for that process will go out at that time.
And I, and I just wanted to jump in a little bit there. We are, we've, with O D S, with our objective design standards, we have established some different standards for what projects require discretion and which ones do not. So if this is under that threshold, which it very well could be, and it meets all of our objective standards, it would just proceed to a building permit. There would be no additional public outreach or input opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, I'll close public comment and go back to our city attorney about the time thing.
Yes, just confirming that if there is any litigation or administrative action filed against the project, that the project, that ten-year timeline would be stayed for the duration of of that legal proceeding and then picked back up afterwards. And that's section three point one point four of the development agreement.
So I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion, but I do want to remind the commission that the planning department has worked with the applicant on this project and worked within the confines of the stipulation in order. And so if you have any recommendations, feel free to share those. But remember that we are limited by what's in that stipulation agreement. So if you guys have any comments or suggestions, please feel free. Otherwise, we may want to move to a vote. Yes, Commissioner Schmidt.
Excuse me, I have one more question about the objective design standards. So those that we have adopted currently or are to be adopting, those will most likely be the objective design standards that will, would affect this project. Or because of the development agreement itself, would the development agreement lock in the present objectives, design standards in case if there is anything that changed within the ten-year span, would those then be included or not? Or would they, again, because of the agreement?
So that I believe that the development agreement does lock in the standards on the date of approval of the development agreement through councils. So our objective design standards that are adopted currently are currently in force. But if there were any changes that did not involve life safety conditions, those would not necessarily be able to be enforced.
Okay, thank you.
This is more discussion, and that's okay right now, right here. Okay. So I, I believe I saw in it that no frontage improvements to El Camino were necessary because there's no entry. And there's no suitable entry for that. So I was wondering that because the last time we had this item before us, there was all this talk about the gateway and how this project could be that and improvements to be made. So I was just curious how my fellow commissioners felt about that at all. Seems like there's a finding, though, that there would be no need for for gateway improvements. And then just knowing that this would be public to a multifamily and the general plan update. Just wondering about traffic improvements, and they're not needing to be any, doesn't it doesn't seem like something that should go underrated.
And that may be a question for staff, but I think that a lot of the frontage improvements are in our municipal code. So when they apply for a project, if there was something that would be enforced by the municipal code, then they would have to do that. Technically, El Camino wouldn't be frontage because that's not the front. So I'm not familiar enough with the municipal code to be any more specific on that. Traffic studies are also a thing that they do when they apply for things. So yeah, having forty-two new homes would probably change the traffic pattern a bit. And I would say we would probably defer to Public Works and the Planning Department when the project is actually applied for. And again, I, I'll be honest, I did not read the stipulation that they agreed to. So I don't know how much of those two things we can change. Kelly?
Yeah, frontage improvements are governed by our municipal code, which generally require sort of all project frontages to be built out with required improvements. And those requirement improvements are typically sort of a citywide policy or plan developed by our Public Works Department and implemented by our Public Works Department. So our Public Works Department did look at this. And and the traffic engineer did look at this as well. So when we look at pedestrian connectivity and V M T analysis and providing multimodal options, the traffic analysis did conclude that full frontage improvements along El Camino Real wouldn't be really be required. They would be very premature at this time. There's no other frontage improvements and likely if frontage improvements were to be provided along El Camino Real in that area, it would be a city-led effort to do so because there's just nowhere for the pedestrians to go once they reach the edge of the property, and that actually creates some unsafe situations. There are some sidewalks and less gaps along Viejo Camino, and that is where they're taking access from. So our city engineer and the property owner, through looking at our municipal code as well, determined that the best-case scenario for this particular agreement would be to agree to just do frontage improvements along Viejo Camino.
Anybody else? No? Okay, I will make a motion that we are we, can you put the boards up? Okay, adopt draft P C resolution recommending that the city council approve a development agreement in substantial conformance with the attached draft between Scott Noon and the city of Atascadero.
And I would second that.
Chairperson King? Yes. Commissioner Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Carranza? Yes. Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson, Brandon Nikoff?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, we are going to move on to our sequo streamlining. I don't even know if I can say dazzle me for sequo.
You absolutely can.
All right, dazzle me, dazzle me. Do we have any expertise? Do we have any expertise? Oh, yeah, Commissioner Crowns, any expertise on sequo?
No, I do not have.
No? Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Hughes?
Surprisingly, no.
Commissioner Heath, any expertise on the sequo?
No.
No, Commissioner Anderson?
No expertise.
And Chair, Vice Chairperson, Brandon Nikoff?
No.
Okay, me neither.
Good evening, planning commission. It's been some time.
You're doing the presentation?
I'm going to start this presentation. We have a wonderful consultant this evening, Genevieve, who was on a bit earlier, who's also going to do a big part of this presentation because she really helped the city a lot by helping us develop these policies and standards that you've got before you in this report tonight. But my job is to try and dazzle you a bit upfront and tell you about really what what is actually going on here. And first of all, it goes back to our housing element that we adopted some years ago. It actually included some policies that said, we need to make it easier to process applications. We need to streamline the review process. We need to put sequo in a little box over here and figure out how to get through that process more efficiently. So that's what this is about tonight. We're implementing housing element programs. But at the same time, we're utilizing grant funds. We got what was called LEAP, the Local Early Action Planning. And we got this other one called REAP, which is Regional Early Action Planning. A couple of grants we got a couple of years ago that really helped us do a lot of policy development. So the LEAP one really paid for this particular effort. And the idea was to save some staff time, reduce applicant time and cost, which is a big deal because we shouldn't be doing sequo documents called precise plans on single-family homes. They're supposed to be exempt. The whole key is sensible development, having sensible development standards. So we can avoid a bigger environmental process that doesn't even produce the same results. So having these clear upfront standards is what we're going after. Now, which one of, so I'm going to pick on you a little bit, this bit of a quiz. So Jason, you may, Mr. Commissioner Anderson, you're the one. So can you define to me, and don't look at your screen, yeah, I can't look at your screen, what's, what's a ministerial project compared to a discretionary project? Those words are always a little bit wordy, but
Ministerial just basically means that there are set for standards that are set kind of without discretion. A discretionary request would be something that you could vary on. Like, is it a, requires to be a hundred feet? That's non-discretionary. It needs to be within, you know, safe limits. That's discretionary.
Perfect, perfect answer. And in our easier terms, really, what it means, when something's ministerial, for us, it just means it can go straight to a construction permit. Don't have to go to the design review committee or the planning commission or the city council or administrative hearing. Whereas discretionary, we can add conditions. We bring them to your board and we look at things. So in a perfect world, we have things, as many things as we can stay in a ministerial world because it saves a lot of time, it saves the applicant a lot of money, it saves a lot of staff time. And if someone develops things consistent with a predetermined set of standards, they stay in that. So what we're trying to do here is put more things in that ministerial box, but create standards that protect the environment, create standards that protect historic resources, create standards that protect creeks, reduce grading, reduce tree removals compatible with hillsides. All of those things. So a little background, our current code right now just has a blanket statement in it that says if you grade on a slope that is over twenty percent in grade, that you're going to have to do a precise plan. And you're going to have to do basically a sequo document on that project regardless of how good of a job you do with designing and reducing your impacts, it's just going to trigger that document. Along with that, we don't have any really good grading standards. We don't have any really good standards about how you develop near a waterway or how a tree a historic resource. So what happens is everything ends up doing a sequo document. And through that, we provide custom mitigation, which isn't always that great. And the applicants don't get these pre-prescribed standards. So tonight, we're going to talk about adopting new zoning standards, a whole slew of them. There's a lot of reading material here. So I know you haven't had time to get through all of it, but you're very fortunate because we've got a team here tonight to guide you through it. But there's going to be discussion about hillside grading and development, and I don't expect you to understand all of those details. Water course and wetland adjacent projects, really in much more common sense words, that just means creek setbacks. But that's a scary word, so we don't say it a whole lot. And the other one is historic resources. That's something that's near and dear to me. I spent many years working with historic resources. So that's another factor in this whole process. And then there's archaeology as well. So all of these things are items that in one form or another, trigger the environmental impact report. They trigger sequo, they they trigger us preparing an initial study. What we're trying to do is develop automatic code sections that guide us around that so that projects end up getting a better design upfront, people have better expectations, and we don't have this additional process. So with that, tonight, is this, this is where you take over, Genevieve? You're going to talk a little bit? Oh, Kelly. So Kelly now is going to tell you about, well, that's right, Kelly, take slide six to nine. Kelly's going to tell you a little bit about the first topic, which is hillside grading. We have a heck of a lot of hillsides in Atascadero. Kelly, go.
Awesome. I feel like this is the most dazzling section, so I'm really excited to present it to you. Existing hillside standards and grading standards. So obviously, we have a lot of standards, whether they be in our Title IX or our building code or public works codes related to grading and making sure that that properties are constructed in a manner that is safe and does not interrupt or cause any sort of damage to adjacent properties. But in addition to that, what sequo generally looks at is how can we ensure that this blends in with the natural environment and doesn't create too many environmental impacts, even if it stays with on your property or is engineered to be safe? We actually do have an existing hillside grading policy that was established quite a number of years ago. And really, that policy focused on when can you create a flat pad on a property and when do you have to sort of use stem walls to build on a property? When is that appropriate? And so we've incorporated some of those ideas from our our current hillside grading policy into the new development standards. We also have our native tree ordinance that talks about reducing impacts to native trees. And so we've developed some objective standards to say, what does that actually mean? Our tree ordinance says if you take out a tree, you pay into the fund or you do a conservation easement or you replant trees. But it doesn't necessarily say you can only take out this number of trees or that number of trees. We don't necessarily want to say that either, but but how do we approach this in an objective way to say that you are building appropriately for the site that you're on and reducing impacts without being overly prescriptive and without allowing people to cut down all of the trees on their property? And then our current code again has that twenty percent clause. So even if there's no trees on the property and you're building stem wall construction and you're minimizing your grading impact and you're pushing your house up against the street, if you touch twenty percent, you have to go through the secret process. And so that's what we're trying to avoid with the new standards. And so our standards are written with a lot of numbers in them to make them objective. And some of the things that we've done are development area, so grading up to ten thousand square feet. Seems like a really big number. It is a really big number, but this also includes all of your grading area. So your area for driveways, your area to make sure that your driveways can meet a fire department access requirements and maximum slope requirements, and then all of the grading for your house and your garage. So we did test this against a couple of projects, and this seems to be a reasonable area where we can develop standards to mitigate some of that grading and ensure that retaining walls are incorporated or natural graded slopes are incorporated and still allow people on our very sloped properties on the west side to come up with a realistic project that works for them. In terms of building pad, this is where we incorporated our hillside grading policy, so slopes up to twenty percent. You can do a flat pad grading with a typical slab construction allowed. We have some standards on yard size and flat graded area around your house that can be incorporated. And then on slopes of over twenty percent, using stem walls and split levels to sort of go with the contours of the land rather than change them drastically. We have some standards about lowest finished floor height. So if you are doing a stem wall construction house, you don't have a really, really blank tall facade that somebody's looking at, and then a one-story house kind of perched on top of that. I think one of our worst-case scenarios that we always look at, it was a really difficult site to develop, is a property up on Los Altos Road that was on 40 or 50% slope. And they did do a two-story house, and we did measure, and and they would have complied with the standard. So it's not overly onerous at all. Again, that grading for yard areas. So we do want people to be able to enjoy their property, and just because you're on a slope doesn't mean that you shouldn't have some small, flat area if you so desire one. So we do have some allowances for that, even if you are on some sloped properties. And then retaining wall standards. So rather than have a 16-foot retaining wall, we do have some standards for lower retaining walls that are terraced. And then we have some allowances. If you're going to reduce impacts to native trees, or if you need a larger retaining wall, taller retaining wall, to maintain on your property and not encroach onto the neighboring property, or create an unsafe situation for your neighbors, we do have allowances for that built-in. So again, working towards a more environmentally sensitive design, while understanding that we do have some unique conditions in Atascadero that need to be addressed. Native tree removals, this is where we bring in some objective standards for native trees that are outside of our current native tree ordinance. So we kind of have two different stipulations. Removals less than 30% of the existing tree canopy, or 10,000 square feet, whichever is less. So allowances for heavily trade properties, again, and then that 10,000 square feet corresponds with the amount of grading area that you can do, so fairly realistic. You know, we don't wanna allow something on one end, and then it becomes limiting and triggering on another side to do SEQA. So we did try and tie those standards together. Look, we have really fun animations in there that I was not aware of. Sorry, Genevieve. Also, projects that do not comply with the ministerial thresholds, that's still okay. You can propose something that is outside of our standards. These standards are to widen our ministerial box, where you can go straight to building permit. But if for some reason you can't meet the standards, or you have a different idea and you don't want to, that is still fine. We'll just go through our normal process where we do a SEQA document, and go through that more discretionary process, something that's definitely allowed, and it's what most people do today. And so we're not taking away anything. We're just trying to enhance what people currently can do without going through that process. And now I think Genevieve's gonna talk a little bit about watercourse and wetland adjacent development.
Great. Thank you so much. So this runs kind of similarly in a kind of parallel structure with the ministerial box and a discretionary box. So currently, looking at the watercourse adjacent areas, the city does not have any zoning standards that tell a property owner what they can and cannot do near their watercourse, or if their property also includes wetland area. There is an existing general plan policy that describes that a creek setback, generally 20 feet from most creeks and 100 feet from wetlands associated with the Salinas River. So that's kind of the the larger policy, but we don't have any clear direction that property owners can go to in the zoning code to understand what they can do with their property. There is, the city has the the local area management plan. And in 2018, the city prepared the the lamp, implementing the Regional Water Quality Control Board standards at the local level. The city's lamp sets a setback from creeks for leach lines specifically of 100 feet, and a setback of 200 feet from wetlands to leach lines. But the lamp doesn't address anything else besides those leach, those leach lines. It's it's no development is discussed in there. And there's also a lot of other agencies that have a say in this discussion. Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Army Corps, the Regional Board, FEMA, and so property owners are, you know, often questioning, like, what do I actually have to do? Staff gets questions. What can I do within these areas? And really, what's the process? So adopting standards here can really help to provide that that information a little bit, and also that flexibility and local control for projects, while at the same time considering, you know, these are waterways that that do need to be protected and adequate flood control measures kept in place. So the first, the first pathway, the ministerial pathway, this is the easy pathway for for folks to to go through. And first, these these proposed standards are intended to really provide clarity about some of the definitions that some of the other agencies might be using too, and and really just set the the boundaries of, you know, what are we talking about? How far from the creek? What does top of bank mean? And and all those pieces. So these proposed standards make it clear what those areas are. It's it's really 20 feet from all creek tops of bank, and wetlands edges, and 100 feet from the Salinas River. And we talk about how that top of bank can be is measured. And then similar to the hillside standards, we've got these two pathways. Here in ministerial pathway, we'd allow certain items within these watercourse adjacent areas with just a building permit, as long as the applicant is compliant with the standards for those items, and completes the necessary soils, bio, and hydrology reports. And these standards are really intended to set up some cues about what can really be done in these areas. Without that, you know, with with just a discretionary review, it's kind of just, you know, property owners guessing about this. So we have a clear list of what the items are that can be placed in these areas. Open-air fences would be allowed, low landscape walls, these are three feet or shorter, paths and and walkways would be allowed, either impervious or pervious. And then I think staff gets a lot of questions about patios and decks and gazebos in these areas. And so we wanted to set a kind of threshold of size for those. So that would be looking at any of these that cumulatively represent 30% or less of the creek fronting property line. So you're not kind of consuming the entire area with with these structures or or decks. Outdoor furniture would also be allowed, doing your landscaping, rain gardens, all of these types of things. Staff has gotten requests for propane tanks as well. Really only would want those if there's no other feasible location on the property. So that's clarified in the code language. And then small standard round culverts, if you have a creek on on your property, to 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 build a culvert, a small one, or or even a large one with a natural bottom, those would also be allowed under these standards through ministerial review. And then in downtown, there's some additional features that are allowed to really facilitate the the kind of embracing of the river and river-oriented development. So trails, outdoor dining, and gathering spaces would also be allowed. And then projects that don't fit within the list of allowed items and improvements would go through option two, the discretionary review. This would include any other types of structures, sheds, anything else that's not specifically called out in that item list in ministerial review. So these projects would go through the discretionary review process, same as today, complete SEQA. And the intent, in general, the intent is to have a little extra oversight on items that could be swept away by floodwaters, cause damage downstream, clog waterways, and make flooding situations even worse, like we saw due to some of the heavy rain events in 2022. So the Planning Commission may want to discuss this, this particular piece a little bit more. That was mentioned in the staff report to you, if you'd like to weigh in on this particular item a little bit more. If you do want to discuss this and want to consider allowing sheds and kind of the Home Depot sheds and other structures in this area, staff, we would recommend that we do put some limitations on size, similar to those patio and gazebo and deck limitations, because we do wanna make sure that we don't have the potential for 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 more flooding downstream. Back to Phil.
All right, as I promised, talk about historic resources, another category in this whole process. So right now, we don't have any standards in our regulations. We have general plan policy, but guys, it's for historic resources. But really, we also default to SEQA, because SEQA basically says that anything that would qualify as a historic resource, we have to treat as a historic resource through the SEQA process. So oftentimes, that creates a misunderstanding with the public, creates misunderstanding even with our staff. They don't know what's historic, what should be treated differently, you know, what qualifies for an exemption, and what 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 triggers SEQA. So it's just a gray area, and it's something we want to be able to encapsulate and have standards for, so that we're not running SEQA every time we play with a historic resource. But at the same time, so we protect these things that are the fabric of the history of our community. Part of this process will entail adopting a list of historic resources. Tonight, we're asking the Planning Commission to kind of endorse a generalized list of, for example, the colony homes, the civic institutional structures, the structure that we're in tonight, for example, which is already, by the way, on a state and national list of historic resources. But we need to have a local list that recognizes our significant colony homes that are still well preserved, and some of the other features in our in our community. But that's a little bit larger of an effort. We wanted to do some more expanded outreach to let those homeowners know that we were wanting to create a local list, and what benefits could be available to them, should we do that, and how that can help them. But it was too premature to develop that comprehensive list tonight. So we're talking now about more of a generalized list and generalized theme. We also have in place, and have had for many years, what's called a historic site overlay, HS overlay, that was inconsistently used in the past. And we originally designed that overlay to put on all the colony homes, and put on historic resources to designate them as historic. But rather than use that kind of a process, it's a lot better. Most cities, what they do is just use a list instead of having a map. And so we're gonna use that historic site overlay only to apply to properties on the state and federal historic registers. That would be like the printery, this building, there's a state, there's a hospital building, a couple other sites that would end up on that list. So with the process, just like the other features, like the grading, a lot of ways we've mentioned, if a project's consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties, it would be able to go forward with a construction permit. So basically, it would be mitigated to a less than significant level. Option two, a project must have come in, let's say they want to completely change a historic resource, or change some of the features that would be inconsistent with the Secretary of Interior standards, then it would have to go still through a SEQA process. Now, contrary to popular belief, you can do quite a bit with a historic resource and stay consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards. You can build additions to historic resources. You can move historic resources, you can change them. You can completely reconstruct them. All of those things are compatible with the Secretary of Interior standards. So contrary to popular belief, Secretary of Interior standards want you to keep historic structures alive. What does that mean? It means you, they want you to keep using them, and to keep using these structures means you have to keep them safe. You have to keep them, in some ways, modernized. You have to keep them electrically and fireproof and safe, and that means doing a lot of things. And so those those standards are designed to let you do those things. Next. Ah, archaeology, the stuff that's in the ground typically. We do have a lot of archaeological resources in Atascadero. We do have Native American sites. We don't disclose those sites, obviously, because they're open to vandalism if you do that. But in a lot of cases on construction projects, we do end up accidentally digging into archaeological resources. It's happened many times since I've been here at the city of Atascadero, believe it or not. And so we need standards of what to do when that occurs, and what's standards, you know, that tell us that we can just keep moving forward with a what we call a Phase One archaeological study. And when do we need to actually go further and do a Phase Two, or do some recovery on a site? We need standards for that, so that we can still avoid that greater SEQA process, should we get into an archaeological site. And then our department does maintain maps that have, that show where the sensitive archaeological sites are. Of course, those aren't published. So that leads us almost to the end. I'm sure you'll have a few questions. I'm sure we can wrap a few things up. But the intent tonight is to make a recommendation on these revised code standards to the City Council. That means adopting a couple of different resolutions, and it would recommend that the council actually introduce an ordinance that would adopt these discretionary review thresholds and standards for hillsides, historic and archaeological resources, and the watercourse adjacent areas, and then approve a zoning map amendment to remove the historic site overlay, because we had started to put it on some houses and some strange things some years ago, but it was never done consistently. So we want to remove that, and apply that only to the state and federally registered historic resources only. And then, along with that, adopt a generalized historic resources list. Now, we do plan to come back at some point with a more complete historic resources list, but that's gonna take a little more outreach and notification. So the next steps, we do plan to actually jump straight to the City Council November 12. And that would put us getting an ordinance that would be in effect possibly by the end of the year. It would go into effect 30 days after its second reading. So let's say, yeah, if we if we made it back, actually, it's not gonna make it back until the beginning of December. So we'll probably be in January before this would actually take effect, if we keep moving forward as we are proposing. But with that, I'm gonna finish the presentation and be available to answer your questions. And we have a staff planner in the audience that's here too, to provide any kind of updates and information. Eric Gomez, our planner. Thanks, I just wanted to make, thank you for being here.
Thank you. It was dazzling. Do you guys have any questions, clarifications? Questions? Commissioner Schmidt? Yeah, I know. Hold on, Commissioner Crandall? Okay, go ahead with your question.
I'll go first this time. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. Well, let's see, I'm gonna go back in my notes here. Wait one second. So can you go back to the slide staff that talks about the trails and the outdoor dining gathering in downtown? Yeah, the waterways, yeah. So just to clarify, that's only in the downtown?
So the standards that are outside of downtown allow patios and those kind of spaces on private property, but there's more of a size limitation on those. In the downtown, we didn't really wanna be limited by size. Obviously, there's other standards through other agencies that we would need to meet, but most of the property downtown is actually owned by the city that the creek is in. And so we wanted to have some flexibility to have wider pathways to make them ADA accessible, and make them more of a public gathering space. So those things are allowed on private property. There's just some additional size and scope limitations.
Okay. And then this slide can stay up. I have a few questions around it. So the the landscapes, not so much the installation, but before that, like, are there specific landscape choices for watercourse areas that that make sure that there's no invasives, or even that conversation between native versus non-native? And then there's non-natives that are not invasive. So I'm just curious about that specific piece of landscaping review.
I can respond to that one. So the standards that were are written today do allow for the installation of new landscaping, as long as it's non-invasive. Native is not called out specifically, but it is called out that it must be non-invasive. And then folks are also allowed to maintain their vegetation within that area. So you might have to get other agency permits to do that, but just kind of clarifying that that is also allowed. Rain gardens, other types of things, those are also bioswales, those kinds of things are also noted that they're allowed.
Is there going to be an updated list, or a list that's included in the next version for like, what the landscape choices are that are, like, is there a list of non-invasives? Because I think you can make claims that, or maybe there's going to be on the desk, you know, oh, this is my landscaping choices, and they're just not. I mean, I can think of two creeks in our city, not this one, but other cities that have crazy amounts of invasives. And I've been a part of those projects. To no avail have we met our goal. Every year, we have to keep doing removals. So, yeah.
I don't know that there would be a future list right now. A lot of cities do require landscaping to go in as part of their single-family permits. They're generally done as tract homes in Atascadero. We're subdivided in 1913. We do not regulate people's landscaping to any sort of degree. Obviously, it's regulated for commercial installations by the state in terms of water use, and some subdivisions and tracts on the residential side. But we do not holistically regulate landscaping on private property. On the residential side, but we do not holistically regulate landscaping on private property. So if we were to add a particular list other than saying non-invasive so that we could go enforce that if something got out of control. That would be a lot more sort of regulation and staff oversight than what exists today.
Sure, I just didn't know within the ministerial review before it had to be discretionary if there was a list of those or things that possibly are popular. I could name one in the creekway that I actually belong to on my property, which is periwinkle. It's everywhere in the creek. Yeah, and that's very invasive. So that's just one example that's here in my backyard if you want to come. And then the other piece is just a question about the permeable landscapes versus non-permeable landscapes. And I didn't know, maybe our city already has this and I just haven't looked in depth. But is there going to be any kind of. Literature regarding like a push towards LID versus. That not even being a question for people if they're putting in walkways and things like that, low impact development.
So right now, the city does not require permits for a certain amount of impervious surface. So you can go build a patio in your backyard and it does not trigger a permit. What triggers a permit is impervious surfaces over. Thousand, a thousand square feet, I believe, is our code trigger for requiring a drainage permit and some sort of analysis. And so that trigger would still hold. Regardless of whether you were in the, the creek adjacent area or outside of that.
Just, I guess, more comments slash questions because I know this isn't the final. So thanks for bearing with me. And then. I think my last one. Oh, I had a question, just it references in the staff report. Just that the staff had reached out to local tribe members and such with the archaeological resources. I was just curious who those groups were.
We reached out a couple of times to our, our local Celine and tribe and a couple of other tribal members that are very active in our community. We, we did not get a lot of input back formally. We've had a couple of conversations with them while we've been on other site visits with them. But we didn't get a lot of formal input, but we did reach out to them a number of times.
Okay, and in between now and the, the more, I think, polished up review after city councils. Take at it, is there going to be more intensive conversations with them or if it just, if it, if it happens that they?
We always hope to. We think we've incorporated a lot of the comments from conversations we've had over the years. We've tried numerous times to have a more formal conversation and it just, we haven't been able to connect in that way.
Okay, I can follow up on that.
Commissioner Schmidt, go ahead.
Thank you. The last question was kind of intriguing. Normally, when we have SEQA documents. That normally tr- triggers side inspection by indigenous people to be on the property. When construction is going on. So if. In a project that has some archaeological resources. Is determined to be meets thresholds, then. If indigenous folks want to be on the property to. Inspect what's going on, is that going to be happening or is that going to be written within the threshold or how's that going to be handled?
Sure. So currently, when we do a secret document by state law, we do send notifications to the tribes. I think we have 18 or 19 contacts on our list that all get a letter. They can come in and do early consultation. A lot of times during that early consultation, if, if it is not in a sensitive area. That is, that is part of their known area, they do not require any monitoring for construction. So most of our projects do not have tribal monitoring associated with them. There are a couple known areas where we do have monitoring either by a tribal member. Or by a qualified archaeologist. The city does not determine who, who a private property owner contracts with for that monitoring. If, if there's a significant archaeological resource in the area, the phase one will say that it needs a phase two and it will go through a secret process still. If the phase one comes back and says that there's no issue, maybe do construction monitoring, then that construction monitoring by an archaeologist or a tribal member. Will be a condition on the permit. But the phase one usually sorts out, you know, where the, where the truly sensitive areas are and where it's just sort of. A blob adjacent to something and there's not actually anything in the, the specific vicinity of the, the digging or construction that needs to be addressed.
In general, I have a comment about the minimum or the maximum threshold, the 10,000 square feet of disturbance. Especially within hillside projects. Sometimes there's very limited areas in which you can build and maybe the most sensitive area is way over there. And so you have to get there. We, we all know that fire department standards are. Get great, they're greater in size, the more distance you go, driveways get wider. Turnouts are needed. Turnarounds are huge. They really eat up a lot of room, you know, sometimes 3,000 feet if you just have a hammerhead. And so when we're talking about 10,000 feet, square feet of disturbance. And that hammerhead and the driveway and everything else has to fit within that 10,000 square feet, you might not. Have very much room left over to build your house. And so I guess that kind of leads me to, one of the big questions I had is, so the thresholds, are we going to define? What projects apply, that thresholds apply to, or is it any project? Any project size or any project type can use a threshold or is it going to be limited?
It's any, any project size or project type when you're grading on hill sites.
In terms of the 10,000 square feet, I was also kind of. Intrigued by the 30% canopy or 10,000 square feet and you did say that disturbance would be inclusive within the disturbance area, right?
Correct, yes, it's an overlapping standard.
And then what's 30% canopy, branch removal or?
So these would be tree removals.
Oh, 30, okay, 30% of trees.
Of the canopy area on, on site.
How's the relationship going to be worked with responding agencies? You have to send this, you send this to. California Fishing Game. And they come back in response and they ask, their comments include. Mitigations that aren't. Part of the thresholds or do we tell them that the, the project is. Is, I don't know what to call it. If, if it's ministerial. Therefore. We're not asking for these certain things, but the agency is asking for it is, how's that?
If it's ministerial, it's not going to go to those agencies. So the only reason it would go to those agencies, it was a discretionary project under SEQA, so I think.
So, so if you, if you are building a coverted crossing in a jurisdictional waterway. You will still be required to go get Army Corps of Engineering Fish and Wildlife permits.
We don't have a threshold that says you can do that, right?
They have jurisdiction. We don't, we don't, we don't tell them when they, when they issue permits and when they don't. So if, if you are doing work in a jurisdictional area, you are still required to get permits, whether the city process is discretionary or not. And then they will have permit requirements that need to be implemented by.
Necessarily talking about jurisdictional area, just when you, when you send out comments on the SEQA document to any responding agency. Public Works, the. Fishing Game, Regional Water Control Board, they come back with comments. And their comments in the, in the past have a lot of weight to it. So is there going to be, are the. If there's a conflict with a responding agency, then how are we going to respond to that?
Well, they wouldn't, they wouldn't see anything that's outside their jurisdiction as part of this process. So if it's ministerial, they don't see anything outside their jurisdiction.
I think what he's asking is if they conflict with these standards that we're proposing to adopt, it doesn't matter because if it's going to them. That means someone has not been consistent with these standards. So we would only send something to them if we're going to do a precise plan or if they're working with a waterway. And then those agencies are going to come up with mitigations and standards that are going to be different with our adopted standards and that's okay. That's what it's supposed to be. These standards are only being put in place for projects that aren't. Going to be reviewed by those agencies or aren't going to trigger this, the precise plan or the SEQA. So a lot of projects will still fall under SEQA and will still go to Fish and Wildlife, still go to other agencies. And they still will have mitigations and other conditions. We're just trying to reduce that list by adopting these.
And that was kind of my original question is, are we going to define what, what work scopes are that fall within the thresholds that we develop? Obviously. A, a large subdivision that's on top of the hillside that 50 acres. It's not going, shouldn't fall within a threshold, but if we don't have anything that says it can't be used and someone might try.
So, so a subdivision is a discretionary action. It goes before board for hearing. And so that requires SEQA regardless. These are for actions that would normally be ministerial. And the only trigger that's making them discretionary is grading on slopes of over 20%.
They're more development projects than subdivision project, subdivision project won't apply to have any thresholds to.
Right, we're not taking anything that is by our code or legally in state law discretionary and forcing it to be ministerial. We are just taking things that started ministerial. We had a trigger for discretionary, but it shouldn't necessarily be there.
Are, are. Objective design standards somewhat of a threshold?
Not in terms of whether or not we do a SEQA document or not.
Yeah, okay. So. There's a lot of people, there's many types of SEQA documents, you know, EIR being the top, the lowest being exemption. So will projects. Be exempted from SEQA or are they not going to have any designation to SEQA at all?
These are ministerial, so they do not follow SEQA at all.
Well, in general, I would recommend to the commissioners that the. We consider increasing the size of disturbance area, but beyond that, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
We just need to open for, have we done public comment?
I'm so sorry. Okay, I'm going to open the item for public comment. If you'd like to step up to the podium and state your name for the record and you have three minutes for your comment. No? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Just to address the. Increase in the size, Kelly did say that they ran these. Oh my God, my brain just shut off the standards. Kelly said that they did run these standards on a number of projects that have been done in recent years and that most of them would have fallen under ministerial. And so. I personally don't have a lot of experience in how large things are, but I feel like. Unless you have like a number that you're thinking of that perhaps. Leaving it up to the planning departments since they're the ones that are going to have to write the SEQA documents for things over 10,000 square feet. If they think that's a good number to reduce the number of SEQA documents that they're writing, then that might be a good number.
I, you know. There's parts of me that say that you kind of get what you choose and if I choose to. Disturb more for whatever reasons I have, then I'm also buying into I have to do a SEQA document. I just, I was thinking more around 12, 12,000, 12, 12,500, somewhere in there. It was kind of the number I was thinking. But again, if it's, if it's more than 10,000, then I, I mean, that's part of the review process that we're going to go through that. I, I come in with an application, this is what my work scope is, can I? Do I meet any of the, the thresholds? I'm told no at that point and I know that I have to do. I have to do a SEQA document at that point.
Or change your plans to get under that 10,000 square foot threshold.
Sometimes, like I said.
Right, sometimes it's not possible. Yeah.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yep.
So currently, the current requirement is that everybody on those slopes has to go through the SEQA process. So I think that the 10,000 foot's threshold is adequate for most of the things that would be ministerial. And I, I think if we increase that, then, you know, we're getting into. Some square foot areas that I just don't feel comfortable with it being ministerial. They, they can go through the SEQA process if it's over 10,000. It's my opinion.
Okay.
I guess, you know, there was comments made earlier that there are certain projects that are. Discretionary now despite what people do to mitigate. I mean, someone can incorporate every. Feasible mitigation on a, a project that's considered a precise plan. But because of the parameters of a precise plan, they still have to go through SEQA.
Right now, everybody has.
They've mitigated everything. With their design, they've taken all the, the right steps, they've used the right plants, they're using the walls, they're using. Everything that we have, every tool in the box we have. And it's. If SEQA will look, well, in this case, SEQA will, will look at it and say that there are no significant impacts. Because it's being mitigated by all these things. And so. There are projects, there are people who. Who do, do things correctly. And I think they should be recognized through this process, even if they're more than 10,000 square feet. Maybe some type of language that says that. They, they've incorporated all the thresholds that are available to them, but yet they still disturb more than 10,000 square feet. Maybe allow for some type of review to say, okay, in this case. Even though it's impacted 12,000 square feet, it, it's done everything it can do. To, to mitigate things. And so they're not being punished for, by doing a SEQA review. Because SEQA, not only is it the time and, there, there's an expense that goes with SEQA. Even the NECDAC has to go to the state and it's about $2,700, $2,800. You have to pay for the state to say, yes, we agree with that document. And so. To me, it would be nice to have. Some acknowledgement of what these people are trying to do, Africans trying to do, and if they do do things correctly. Let's acknowledge it and give them a break.
Right, but if we up it to 12,000 and then someone comes in with a 15,000 square foot project and they did everything correctly. I mean, we have to pick a number somewhere and it's not a personal punishment. It's just a number for, you know, where the ministerial process can be done. So that it's easy for those that are under that. And then above that, they just have to add that expense into their development project. I mean, we have to pick a number somewhere.
It's arbitrary. As they, they looked at some projects, did they tell us what projects they looked at and where they were? And, I mean. I, I know a lot of projects that easily exceed 10,000 square feet. Just because of the terrain and the requirements, again, of, of the fire department, which are things you can't get away from.
So question, are you, are you making a motion?
No, I'm arguing that we.
There's some discussion that needs to be talked about other than just saying move along, let's have a good night. So I'm trying to grasp things too from what he's saying.
I just think right now 10,000 is, even though it's been justified, I don't think it's a realistic number. As a maximum area disturbance. Then you have the trees on top of it, that's falls within that 10,000 square feet. And so now I have my driveway, I have my turnouts, I have my turnaround, I have the place where I had to put my fire tank. I have my septic system, I'm going to have to put it because of that area. So, these are all disturbance, disturbances that take away from ten thousand square feet. If the threshold was ten thousand square feet for a footprint for a house, or pad for a house, or an area for a house, then it would be acceptable to me, because I don't. But we, we, I think ten thousand square feet is more than enough for a house, the yard, and for a septic system, and so on. But when you start adding the driveway to it, and everything that goes along the driveway, then that ten thousand square feet is going to get down to five thousand square feet.
So, so do you feel twelve thousand is reasonable? Let's, let's start to run some numbers, and let's start, like, here's what we came up with in these scenarios. Like, for example, a typical residential driveway is about fifteen feet wide. And so let's say your driveway is a hundred feet long. That's fifteen hundred square feet of area. Now, obviously, that driveway, if it's on a slope, it's going to have a greater disturbed area because there's a downhill slope and there's an uphill cut. So the actual area of disturbance might be twenty five feet wide by a hundred, that's still twenty five hundred. It's not a whole lot, right? And that's a hundred foot driveway, it's a pretty long driveway. Two thousand square foot is the average size of the houses that we see now for the footprint, because they're often two stories, they're often three thousand square feet. But two thousand is the actual footprint, most commonly. Two thousand square foot house typically has at least four thousand square foot of graded area because there's a little yard, a little pad, or there's area to get around it. And as Dennis mentioned, there's a hammerhead. So, let's say there's four thousand, plus you've got two or three thousand for your driveway, that's six, seven thousand. That's quite typical. Ten thousand is pretty much, it's, it's definitely getting up there, you've got a much longer driveway, you've got a bigger fire truck turnaround, and you've got a bigger pad, and maybe you're carving out an area for a pool. The thought is from staff, when you get over that amount, you're really creating a lot of land disturbance on a site on a hillside. We're trying to guide that down, we're trying to say, bring that house closer to the right away. We're trying to say, reduce the amount of that yard area. And again, this is only on a hillside site, not a flat site, we're talking about hillside sites where.
It's over a certain slope.
Yeah, you've got significant challenges on a slope that's twenty percent, and you're having to do that. So that's where we came up with it, it really isn't just arbitrary, it is an educated number. I'm not trying to sway the commission, I think you should give your best guess at that. But start thinking about, you know, this is how we came up with those equations. And we looked at a number of grading plans that we have, that we've run through our shop, you know, for development of these single family homes. Really, on our end, we want as few as possible to bump into the SEQA process. But at the same time, you know, there's some concern about how far you go with creating this site before we say, hey, that's reached its limit, you know? And I think Dennis probably knows a lot of these too, because he does these plans and sees these plans, so I'm sensitive to that as well, so.
I'm just trying to sort of get a picture in my head. So, when we're talking about ten thousand square feet of disturbance on twenty percent slope or more, is that right? So if your driveway, your hundred foot driveway is only on twenty percent slope for like ten of those feet, is that the only part that counts towards the ten thousand square foot of disturbance?
Kelly says no. So, I mean, once you, once you have part of your project over twenty percent, then the whole thing counts, right?
I don't think, I don't think it's a small part, I don't think if you have a twenty four percent dip that you touch and everything else is flat, it's triggered. It's over the average slope of the development site. So, if you have a development site that is over, and I, and I think it's fifteen, Genevieve, is that sort of where some standards kick in?
Yes, the standards kick in at fifteen percent, and it is fifteen percent of the area of disturbance. So, it's not averaged over the whole site. But, you know, you're kind of looking at the area of disturbance, is that over fifteen percent? And then looking to keep that under ten, ten thousand square feet, really to give cues to the property owners about what can be developed, how can you develop in a least impactful way to get through the process easier? So, setting these thresholds is really intended to, to send those cues to the property owner. So we don't, yeah, go ahead.
If there's a small portion of the developable area that you're planning on that is fifteen or twenty percent, your average would be less, it'll be ten percent, and then the standards are triggered. So this is really grading on significant hillside areas where you're probably doing switchbacks, where your neighbors can definitely see, you know, what you're doing, and some of the, the impacts associated with that to the neighborhood. So this is, this is not, your site is mostly flat, but you have this little twenty percent area that your driveway is coming off of the road, and then it gets flat. This is on a site that is a hillside site.
So it seems to me like we would not want the area to be particularly large when we're talking about building on a hillside.
We, in our, in our measurement of current projects on the west side, we were surprised at how much ten thousand square feet. We actually started out, I think, at eight thousand square feet. And a lot of projects were right at that eight thousand square foot mark. Projects with long driveways, projects with significant grading, projects, you know, where the neighbors were concerned about what was going on. And we kind of bumped it up to, to ten thousand, to, to put a little bit of wiggle room, and we know that we have difficult sites. There's been a couple of sites that are extremely significant, sort of more of a neighborhood impact than others. Those came in at about eleven thousand square feet. And we did feel like it was appropriate that those still go through a SEQA process with public notification so that there was some level of additional review on those. And so we didn't, we didn't just, we didn't just come up with a number. But again, Atascado has a lot of crazy sites. You, you, no site is developed the same, they're all not rectangles, they all don't have the same slope, they all have the same road and access conditions. And so at some point, you know, we do need to draw a line somewhere, and that line from staff's recommendation is ten thousand, but could be something different from the commission.
Hundred foot driveways are awfully short. I have, in my house, which is next to center of the school, my driveway is longer than one hundred feet. It's flat, but it's longer than one hundred feet. I would say in most cases, there are certain times, certain points when turnarounds are needed, and that's when they, the driveway exceeds a certain length. I know projects off of San Marcos Road that had to exceed a hundred feet, where their driveways exceeded the hundred feet, so they had to put a turnaround. Turnaround is huge, they, they have thirty foot radiuses, it's like a hammerhead. And that, they really suck up a lot of room. And it's like, the planning director was saying, when you have slope banks and things going along with it, it really takes away things. And we're going to be, people are going to be wanting to buy a certain lot because they think that hillside over there is where they want to build the house. And then they, they'll do their homework, and then they'll find out, I can't get that because, well, I can get that if I do a SEQA review on it. But if I implement all these thresholds that we have, I still have to do that. To me, we have to acknowledge that there's some credit for people doing what they, or, or what we're trying to do is have things done correctly.
Okay, so, does anybody else have any input on this? We've heard from Vice Chairperson Vanden Eyckhoff, do you guys have any opinions on ten thousand or twelve thousand, or, and are there a particular number?
I just wanted to point out that, that the purpose of this is to, to reduce the workload of the staff to prevent, you know, you know, a eighty thousand square foot project to go, for going through SEQA unnecessarily. So I believe that that is really what this accomplishes. You know, a ten thousand square foot project is, is, is going to take up a chunk of these projects that would normally take longer and kind of just push them through and, and give the people who are putting the project together a little bit of ease. The great thing about these things is they can be changed later, if we find that it is not enough, we can always come back and review it and add square footage to it later, if we see that it's becoming a problem.
Please hold on. Commissioner Heath, do you have any?
I am basically the same opinion. I think ten thousand square feet is a pretty large area, and I think it's a good threshold.
Commissioner Crown said, did you have any other thoughts on that amount?
I think that what I heard mostly that made sense to me is, you know, it is frustrating when you buy a property, you think that the, the, all the stuff that you can see is potentially something you can do it, and then you learn once you do your homework, which every plot is different, and every city is different, that actually, that's not true. So, I'm empathetic to that, like, in itself, you know, it's like, I'm point eight acre, and there's a lot you can do, unless you're one, right? And so for me, like, that's the, the parallel, the, the same frustration. And so it's just, but, but how do we turn that into a, okay, well, I'm hearing Commissioner Schmidt say something like, okay, well, they need to be awarded, or give it some credit, or, you know, exemplified in some way. And, I mean, to an extent, I know our objective design standards, there's a lot in there that, that does, like, really work with but I can't give the exact detail, but I'm like, I know that when we're moving that direction over the course of this last few months, it was to support and give credit to developers. Like, our objective design standards in general will do that. So I'm not sure, this is, this is, this is really, I think, something that we could recommend that they review, they being the city council, but it could be enlarged, but we're not saying tonight that we think twelve is the answer. I think there could be some room that says, beyond maybe some little notes that the secretary is writing in here, that, you know, the city council review, if it could be, you know, ten to, ten to twelve. But I don't, I, I just don't think that I'm educated enough tonight to say twelve is our answer. Like, but, again, I'm empathetic to the fact that may, maybe there is some room for this. So, just trying to figure out how, how we can come to that recommendation. It sounds like, you know, staff's on their homework, let's see ten, and we can always come back and always come back is actually really hard to get an agenda item, and that's going to increase a lot of staff time and effort to change that from ten to twelve. So I would hear you, but that's actually going to increase a lot of work too, and I don't think that's going to happen, so.
I, I, I'm very empathetic to what he's, it's a common sense argument, and I mean, a lot of the homes here, I mean, I know Sarah very well, so like, you go off San Marcos.
Commissioner Hughes, I, I don't know if your mic. I think a couple of your mics have a little bit of feedback. So if you could borrow an adjacent commissioner's mic, just so we can get it for the record without feedback, perhaps?
So I'm pretty empathetic to the argument that he's making, because knowing this area pretty well, most of the houses you go off of Santa Ana, San Marcos, the higher areas where grade is something you fight, those are homes that people have bought that are like their forever home, their investment. And he does make a point where it's really easy, and to Karan's point, like, once you do your homework, it is kind of a a hard thing to see, uh-oh, like, I can't do what I really want to do. So I'm, I'm very empathetic to what he's arguing here. I wanted to ask, city of the houses you looked at, I, did you just kind of take some from each neighborhood? Or were there any that were like, like more in the higher altitude areas?
So we took our current precise plan applications, so those are all houses that are on significant sloped properties. I think I have feedback too. And so they are, are more challenging sites to build on, so we didn't take flat sites into account. We took only sites that are grading on, you know, twenty to forty percent slope. And I think the one that, that exceeded the ten thousand square feet, that had some neighbor input, had a four hundred or so four or five hundred foot long driveway. And, and had a four thousand square foot house with a, with a thousand square foot detached garage and fairly large yard area with fire department turnaround, that's had some significant neighborhood impacts. And so, ten thousand square feet seem to capture ninety five percent of what we're doing precise plans on currently.
It's you.
Okay. Commissioner Schmidt, did you have any, anything else you wanted to add?
I, I would acknowledge there are lots, because of their subdivision type, like along San Marcos. Most of those homes have limited driveways because they're, they're hanging on, they're hanging on the top of the, of the hill on most of those areas. So they don't extend beyond. So if we're looking in areas like that, I can understand that the footprints, the ten thousand square feet is actually huge for the areas like that. And a lot of the lots that are up in the Highlands are designed that way. Then there are a lot of lots when you go out to Santa Cruz, not out in that area, the Long Valley, Long Valley being appropriately named, they're longer driveways, bigger houses, and things like that. I, I, in terms of what you were saying, we're not saying that they can't build. I mean, anything is what the, with the SEQA cross process, you still can build. We're not saying you can't build, it's just that the expense is being driven up. When you do a biological study, when you do SEQA, usually in most areas, biological studies, archaeological studies, that's five thousand dollars right there for two studies. And then the SEQA document itself costs money. And I had mentioned just the state review of it, but our city also has a, has a price that goes with it. So, I'm not saying that, well, we're giving, we're giving people break right now if you stay underneath ten thousand square feet. So, we are kind of scratching their back at that point. And we're saying, if you go eleven thousand square feet, or twelve thousand square feet, we're not going to scratch your back, even though you've implemented all these things. So, to me, ten thousand is an arbitrary number, twelve thousand square feet is an arbitrary number, twenty thousand, all of it's arbitrary. And so, if we're just wanting to pick a number, then why not pick something that allows a little bit more freedom, in, in my view?
Okay, so I think at this point, okay, so at this point, do you want to make a motion changing it to twelve thousand feet? Because I, I don't necessarily think that we're sharing any new information at this point. So, if you want to know if we're going to change it to twelve thousand feet, I think there needs to be a motion at this point. If, if you want to change that.
I'll do that. Could we put up the recommendation, please?
I would say because this is affecting just one of the resolutions, I believe Resolution A, that we can, the motion could be specific to Resolution, changing Resolution A in the way you desire.
I recommend that the planning commission adopt resolutions B and C. And then we revise the Resolution A that limits disturbance area to, in, inclusive disturbance area to ten thousand square feet and make that number twelve thousand five hundred.
I'll second that.
Can I just have a little bit of clarification? We had tied the ten thousand square foot area of disturbance limitation also to tree removals. Are you wanting to increase tree removals to twelve thousand square feet as well?
No, it would stay as it is right now.
Okay, Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson? Sorry, was that a yes? Thank you. Commissioner Coranta? Yes. Commissioner Heath?
Yes.
Chair, or Vice Chairperson Van den Eyckhoff? Chairperson Keen? Motion passes five two.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to Commissioner comments and reports, anything else to report on? Okay, Director, do you have a?
Okay, Director, do you have another report for us?
Yes, actually, I'd like to report that I think your next meeting is going to be canceled. We're working on some additional items to bring forward to you, but not quite ready to move forward yet. So we'll let you know when our next hearing date is. We're making progress on our general plan. We're trying to get some policy work done. At some point, we'll be before you guys with some policy direction and some maps and some cool stuff. It's just taking a little while. We're starting work on EIR and that's moving along nicely. And you've probably seen the downtown is moving along nicely as well with the construction project and we're working on one side of the road now and in a couple of weeks, they'll start working on the other side of El Comune Real and then three or four weeks after that, they'll start working on the center and before you know it, it'll be beautiful. And
So I I have been getting some on the amount of time that the project is going. So you're saying like maybe two, three months that portion you're working on now will be done and they'll move to the next.
So in two or three weeks, they'll actually be done with the side of the road they're working on now, which is the east side of the road. Then they'll move to the west side of El Comune Real, which is actually not going to be as much work as the east side. And so that'll be worked on for about six weeks, I think, on the west side. And then if weather continues to hold like it has been, then they'll move to the center. And when they start working on the center, it's going to be really cool because then we'll be driving with ultimate lane configuration that we're going to end up with, which is the separation. Right now, we're kind of all squeezed to one side and then it's going to squeeze to the other side. And then when they finally start working in the middle, it'll be, okay, wow, this is kind of like a little bit what it's like, but not quite because it'll still be really messy, but so that's happening. Also want to let you know there is some big projects that are moving along in the background. We have a submittal for Del Rio Ranch. That's going to be the next big project you see at the corner of Del Rio and El Comune Real. It's going to come before you guys. We're also working with Barrel Creek. They're actually moving forward with some construction permits. If our team can ever get done, finish and review those construction permits, it's a big project to look at. So that's happening. And what else is happening in that arena? Kelly, remind me, is there, what other stuff are we? That's about it. The big ones. And then, of course, the the marketplace, I mean, Valley Fresh is is close. There's a couple of other buildings that are going to be starting over there as well. So that's exciting. Del Rio is going to become a place and the roads are going to get a lot better looking here in the next few months and that's coming along nicely. And we're also actually another project we're making progress on that's really, really cool. You haven't seen this design yet is for Centennial Plaza. If you ever want to see what that design looks like, you can shoot me an email. I can send you a kind of image of that design, but we have tentatively awarded a purchase contract to a group that's going to develop a really cool building there. And we're going to sell that property around the Centennial Plaza that goes over to the bridge right here across the street from us. And it's going to be developed with a multi-story mixed use project with some restaurant space, office space and some dwelling units, maybe up to nine dwelling units. Really a neat project, so really awesome looking. So that is going through the final stages of review now and that'll come to the design review committee in December. And so we get to actually see that publicly. And then we're going to enter into a purchase agreement with that property and bring that to fruition. So another piece of the downtown puzzle moving forward. Any other questions, you can let us know.
I think Commissioner Schmidt has a question.
Two questions. So where La Plaza is, there's nothing really happening within that stretch because that work was done recently, correct?
There's a little bit of work happening. There's a little bit of bulb out work on either end of it and there's going to be a little bit of that in a couple of spots right kind of where the
Where the driveway is.
Where the driveway is for the gas station by the plaza, there's going to be some areas that have landscape strips along the edge of the backup sidewalk where water can drain off the street and actually soak into the ground. So there's going to be some of that and it's going to guide pedestrians to the right spots and there's going to be a little bit of signal work. But yeah, you're right. For the most part, the sidewalks are at their ultimate width and the bulb outs and stuff. So that's why there's less work on the other side of the street in general, but there's still some widening and bulb outs to do and some neat stuff and.
Second question is, folks have been asking about the opening of the market at Del Rio. Weather permitting, is have they given any type of end of the tunnel on when that store might open?
Possibly next month. So it could be November, mid-November, I'm thinking. The rest of the site will still be a little messy and so it won't be totally done out there, but it's close, it's getting close and.
And the market is anxious to get in there.
They are. Yeah, they they are really anxious and it's going to be a beautiful market. It's going to be a great alternative spot. We really desperately need that in Atascadero.
A lot of people at the north end of town and.
Yeah, 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 they have their tacos, but they don't have their market.
Thank you.
So it says on here that our next meeting is November fifth, but you said that was canceled.
I don't think Annette's going to let us go that night, she was saying.
I feel like there's something else really important happening that day.
Oh, there's an election. That's right. There's some kind of a little election. There's a presidential thing and there's a local thing. Wait, aren't you a candidate?
Yes.
That's right.
Yes, I am. So we will reconvene at our next meeting, possibly the nineteenth of November.
That's right.
Okay.
Yes.
And hopefully these mics will be fixed.
Yeah, we had a little bit of a technological breakdown before this evening. So sorry, the whole system went down. So this is a makeshift temporary system. This is not what we're going to be stuck with. This is like, oh, my gosh, we got to scramble and get in.
City council does not have to put up with this.
Well, they would if they were here tonight. So it's not just you guys.
All right, then I will officially adjourn our meeting.